Having 10%, at least 10% affordable housing in this community. And then finally, housing cost burden, which is kind of a litmus test to talk about affordability in a community. If a household's paying generally more than 30% of its income on housing expenses, the household is considered to be cost burdened. If it's paying 50% or more, it's considered as paying extremely cost burdened. And I'll just reiterate that these key terms are, if not state, federal definitions and guidelines. So these are, this is the framework in which the Housing Production Plan operates currently. We'll get into qualifications and what those numbers actually look like in terms of income. Low-income earners are households that earn over 50% of yearly income. To put it into context for one-person household, that's someone that's making approximately less than $35,000 per year. A moderate income earner is earning less than 8% of the AMI, and that person or household is earning less than about $22,000 per year. And then middle-income earners, which generally earn between $51,000 and $82,000 per year. So within the framework of what is affordable housing for the state's purposes, we look at who earns 8% or less of yearly income. There's a slide on the screen that gives examples. These statistics are from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development in the greater Boston area. So I won't read through all of them, but it's simply a snapshot of households that would generally qualify for this type of housing stuff. And there is certainly a change in the industry about really calling it what it is, and it's affordable housing, but it's also workforce housing. These folks are folks who earn a living. So that's just an example of some households in different scenarios would qualify for this kind of housing. So I'll talk about the comprehensive needs assessment. MACC was really great in data mining, gathering the data from a variety of sources to identify where the community is and where it's projected as they go. So since 2000, the city's population is increasing and is becoming more diverse. By year 2030, we're looking at a projected 11-16% increase in our population, so anywhere between 102,000 to 106,000 individuals. The plan also found that the growth is balanced by age. All age cohorts, all age groups are growing, but by far the largest share of that growth, the largest gain will be for households that are age 65 and older. So not only are individuals, more individuals coming into the city, but the number of households is increasing. And that's key when you talk about the number of housing units. So since the year 2000, the city's seen a 5% increase in households. By the year 2030, we project a 15% to 20% increase. So that's anywhere between 6,200 to 8,100 new households entering the city within the next 14 years or so. As with greater Boston, we're actually more balanced in terms of household types that are growing. And again, all age cohorts are expected to increase, so everything from young families, older adults. The analysis looks at housing supply and pricing. Since 2009, the median single-family home has actually increased above pre-recession levels. So it's actually nearing peak prices from 2005. Condos are slightly below pre-recession levels. They've increased in price 14%, but again, they're not at the peak they were before the Great Recession. The analysis also found that the median rent is lower than what's the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's fair market rent, with the exception of efficiency in one-bedroom units. So generally, the rent in Quincy is at or around fair market rent. And finally, the city's housing inventory, subsidized housing inventory currently stands at 9.6%. So of all the housing units in the city, 9.6% of those units qualify as some type of affordable housing. Household income, the median income for North Fork County is approximately $85,000. Quincy is less than the county as a whole, with a median income at around $61,200. There are some households, a third of Quincy households actually earn less than $40,000 per year. So there's clearly a demand for some type of rent restricted housing based on the earnings of the income of some of Quincy's households. One thing the plan outlines and evaluates is cost burden, as we just talked about. And the study finds that about 43% of households in the city are cost burdened, meaning they're paying more than 30% of their income on rent or housing expenses. This is not limited to a specific income, meaning a household that earns a million dollars per year may be cost burdened. It's not limited to low or moderate income households. It identifies households in every income bracket. Approximately 20% of households are considered severely cost burdened. So the slide indicates Quincy's position relative to other communities, and you can see the differences when it comes to cost burden in households. The important takeaway here is that, again, there is, according to this test, somewhat of affordability gap. So if we get it all together in terms of what we found, what I mean by found with the data, is there is a demand for more housing units by 2020. And we calculated up to 4,000 more housing units. And that demand really, and those housing units are really across the spectrum. They're both price restricted, affordable housing, but they're also market oriented. There's demand for both single-family and multifamily formats, and the reason behind that is because of the increase in families with children potentially, as well as aging adults who might require less or might want less maintenance, but still want to maintain residence in the community they live in. Multifamily formats actually provides a good housing solution for some of those households. And the city's actively growing. This plan calls for 4,000 units of development, or projects the need, I should say, for 4,000 more units of housing. There are currently approximately 2,500 units already in the pipeline or being constructed in the city currently. The other aspect, again, is the diverse housing options. There is an aging population, not only in the city of Quincy, but across the nation. And housing should do its best to accommodate the expectations and the needs for aging adults as well as young adults who might have just graduated college, as well as families with children. And then finally, with affordability, with the identification of the cost burden, there is a demand for housing at different affordability tiers. So housing that is affordable to households, low-income earners, moderate-income earners, and low-income earners. So that's the needs assessment piece. I'll summarize the goals and the implementation strategies that are outlined in the plan. The first goal is to create those opportunities to develop and really address the needs of households moving into the city. There are a number of different strategies in which we can do that. The first is to continue our first-time homebuyer and housing rehabilitation programs. We also want to make sure that households can age in place through exploration of both design and programmatic mechanisms. I think one good parallel to that is the Age-Friendly Livable Community, which I believe was recently passed by the City Council. There are a lot of the same tenants in there when it comes to housing and how we can help age, housing aging population. And encourage homeownership opportunities. Quincy, according to the data in the plan, has one of the higher rates of turnover of any other, of any of the other communities that were evaluated. Homeownership obviously creates stability and community connections. Another goal of the plan is to encourage housing development to meet and maintain the Chapter 40-T 10% threshold. So the way that we do that is maintain or achieve our annual production goals, and we monitor its progress. We monitor the subsidized housing inventory. We evaluate if there is a shortfall or if there's a surplus, if you want to look at it that way. That is a goal of the plan. So in looking at annual production goals, we're currently at 9.6% of our subsidized housing inventory. We do currently have a gap of units to reach that 10% threshold. We can meet that gap by 2018 by one unit with the current units in the pipeline. So we have approximately 200, we have 225 units that are qualified for the subsidized housing inventory right now that are in various stages of development that, once completed, would allow the city to achieve the 10% threshold by 2018. So there's housing production, there's also housing preservation. The city has done a tremendous job in, frankly, in its history of creating affordable housing and the restricted housing units for members of the community. Unfortunately, at some point, some of them actually expire in terms of their restrictions. So there may be a project that was approved and completed years ago that its restrictions are coming due, essentially. So one goal of the plan is to ensure that we actually preserve those units already in existence and continue their affordability. So by 2019, there are 361 units that would expire in terms of their rent restriction. It is 361 units in three projects. The ways that we can mitigate this is simply working with property owners to extend the affordability, have the conversations, and engage in negotiations with those property owners. And the state, well, the state and the city actually have really good tools to extend affordability. One is Chapter 40-T, which is the state's preservation program. Chapter 40-T was actually recently used for a project in Quincy that continued its affordability of 78 units until, well, perpetuity, basically. So it's been an effective tool in our toolkit. Another existing tool is simply refinancing and making sure that the property owner can do what it needs to do, and we can retain the units and extend affordability. And finally, as I mentioned, renegotiating agreements, whether it be a 121A agreement or another restriction or agreement that the city has with the property owner. The plan also outlines a goal of evaluating the current zoning ordinance, finding out ways that the city might incentivize ways to create workforce housing. Some examples, some strategies is to start the discussion, begin the discussion about different kinds of overlay districts. In the plan, it is discussed a state smart growth overlay district. I believe before the City Council later this evening is a transit-oriented zoning district, another overlay district that will provide density in areas that can handle it, and also just ensure that there is diversity of positive being constructed. Another potential strategy is to look at accessory apartments or accessory dwelling units, and that could be by right or by special apartment in different zoning districts. Another strategy that's outlined in the plan is to explore modifications to the current affordable housing ordinance, which has done a lot. It's created over 170 units of restricted housing today. And it's, we get calls from many communities asking how City Quincy does it. They have gained interest in how the city works in terms of its ordinance. What we can do is look at the percentage that's required, given the growth, and also evaluate the cash flow requirement. That's currently in the ordinance. Another goal is to identify sites most appropriate to accommodate the projected new growth. We know that Quincy is approximately 99% built out. It is a coastal community, and the opportunities for growth are few. What the plan suggests is to identify certain properties in the community that are underutilized and by way of being blighted or vacant, and actually inventorying those blighted properties to create a plan to identify areas of opportunities for infill and redevelop the site to make sure that the property is no longer blighted or vacant, and is also housing focused, which is what's intended to do. MACC and the planning department recognize that the city has a number of local resources that it has used in the past and continues to use that we would like to capitalize on. The city has existing funding sources. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund has, will be coming into a considerable amount of funding. The city is the grantee of federal home and CPG funds, and although those funds are dwindling, we still maintain an allocation. And it's important that we leverage those resources to do so. One recent example is a project on East Tower Street was approved for $1.25 million in Affordable Housing Trust Funds to create 140 units of housing at three different affordability tiers. So at 50% of yearly income, at 100% of yearly income on the market rate. So this $1.25 million is actually being leveraged by $46 million of state and private financing. So that's one good example of how we can leverage resources. The other thing we need to do is leverage our community resources, and what the plan calls for is to create more language equity in housing events and policy discussions, tailor outreach to our minority populations throughout the city. Continue to have educational events about housing, and continue to promote the successes that we've seen in the past. As we go through, another goal is to minimize displacement of lower-income households. One item that the plan outlines is explore the feasibility of condo conversion ordinance, with the thought being that if supply is not fully there for rentals, and owners can certainly convert their rental units to condominiums, that might in fact displace some rental households. So the plan details what condo conversion ordinance might look like to help stem the tide of any unintentional displacement. We would also continue to fund our tenant-based rental assistance programs that are R2 currently, and it's a necessary program to help longer households maintain residence in the city, all the while providing market-grade rents to the landowner. And then again, as I mentioned, preserve the user restricted housing so as to minimize displacement of households. We have a goal to continue to promote healthy housing and living, and again, this is something that's being done now, and we'd like to continue such efforts. Recent programs that really speak to ensuring that any construction or rehab is inclusive of having healthy housing and is healthy housing. So programs such as Solarize Quincy, the Quincy Saves Program, the CPG Housing Rehabilitation Program certainly help meet some of the needs to connect residents to energy-efficient and renewable energy programs, retrofitting existing housing to meet high-energy standards, energy-efficiency standards, minimize exposure to pollutants, posting small reforms, or mediating lead paint and mold. And we also look at, the plan calls for, setting house, housing, or having it being part of the calculation about reducing exposure to outdoor pollutants. For example, housing, setting housing near a highway, there may be some more exposure to outdoor pollutants as opposed to on the coastline. And then finally, continue to provide supportive services to house formerly homeless individuals in new housing. The city has an obligation with the federal government to continue to affirmably further fair housing, and that's essentially ensuring that we educate folks on housing discrimination. The city has a five-year plan, the Fair Housing Plan, that was completed by MACC a few years ago, and outlines in great detail strategies in which we move forward and affirmably further in fair housing. Everything from education to outreach and monitoring, compliance and reporting, and local policies. Final goal, final goal would be to ensure that staff and commissions have the capacity to implement this plan. We have a great trust, Affordable Housing Trust Committee that are dealing with affordable housing policies and projects routinely. The plan suggests that the committee create a strategic plan, how it intends on utilizing its funding, as well as establish funding priorities, and establish standardized information requirements for applicants that go through the Affordable Housing Trust Committee process. It's also important that we have that cross-work collaboration, so different boards and committees are aligned on housing issues, and ensuring that we synchronize information, and continue to ensure that that information is available. For example, the planning department includes its projects online on the website for viewing. And working collaboratively with the local community housing organization that have done and will continue to do great work, and the city, these are our local partners that we have relationships with and know the needs of the residents and the neighborhoods. So here are the next steps. The regulations, the state regulations are applicable by the Quincy City Council. If the council approves the document, it would be submitted to the state. The state may require small changes, which we would produce and submit back to the state. The state would approve the document, and once it's approved, it becomes the city's policy guide to housing production. Be happy to field any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mall. Appreciate your time and also the hard work of Mayor and Mayor. And Jim Fatsis and his whole team, I know that the city is certainly going through a transformation in a lot of ways due to, you know, in all areas, quite frankly. I know you touched upon it, I spent some time over the weekend reading this seven-page Quincy Housing Production Plan. The way that I interpreted it, and I guess I'm just looking for a point of clarity, was MACC, Ralph, I don't know what the word is in your mouth, actually drove the document in collaboration with the planning department, the superintendent schools, the public affairs commissioner, they're all part of it, but I mean, I see your stamp on the front, MACC. Is that accurate, Ralph?
In 2015, the city hired MACC to craft the plan, with, obviously, with the planning department. But MACC, MACC was certainly instrumental in certainly collecting the data and its content.
And just kind of walking through some numbers, roughly, the projection of 4,000 new units by the year 2020.
That's correct, and that's based on projected growth.
And I was looking for this number, I know that it's in here somewhere, or profiled some of the recent growth we've experienced, such as West of Chesapeake and the Avalon Bay, and I think there were a million or more projects. Do you know the aggregate, the total units that they produced? I want to say it's like 2,400, it could be, Ralph?
I think it's in that range in terms of the units that have been built through recent developments.
Yeah, units that are either in the pipeline or in hermiting, or have been recently completed is approximately 2,400, 2,500 units.
So is it 2,400 a year going forward, or looking at 4,000?
It's 4,000 minus the 2,400, 2,500.
Gotcha. That's important, yeah, in terms of priorities, people consider, you know, what's happening and sort of where we're going, at least in my mind. I'm going to open it up to the members of the committee, but just because I know you had mentioned it, this council was fortunate enough to walk and work through this age-friendly or livable communities initiative. You and I had had a conversation before, I represent a large senior population, and I noticed that in the data shared through MACC's research, in the years forthcoming, we are anticipating explosive, I mean explosive growth rate in the ages of 55 to 74. And, you know, I know that we've had this conversation before, I know, working on behalf of my residents, that there is a tremendous, you know, need for senior housing. And I guess, you know, my question becomes, as we, I want to say corp, but as we entertain various developments and striving for our housing production goals, is there a way to create almost centralized senior housing? As my understanding is, over time, it's sort of morphed into senior housing plus. So is there, is there a way to create more senior-specific housing?
Well, I think what's happening is the product that's being developed in terms of multifamily multifamily, so we have not only Quincy, but other communities have seen an increase from the development community in multi-story elevator buildings. And the reason for that, the demand of the baby lower population, I think there's, to your point, I think we projected a 57% increase by 23 of that population. So, this housing type offers many amenities, I think that appeals to that age group, including, because it's an elevator building, it's accessible, so it's physically accessible. It's all one level living, so there's a convenience there. These developments tend to be located in blockable areas, so they're close to transit, they're close to services, both social services and community services. So, I think that that type of housing is serving the needs of that group.
Yes and no, I mean, right, you have high-density residential, let's say, for example, some of the downtown development, a lot of the residents that I mentioned here, they're not, you know, they don't have the financial wherewithal to even make whatever it is for downtown park. I'm thinking more along the lines of what you said, catering more towards senior citizens on fixed income, and it's a senior-centered building, that's it, you're 55, that's for the building. What is, can we exclusively target that type of development, I guess, first? Is that even possible?
Yes, it is possible, and I believe we have, as where there's major restricted housing, included in the city. There are numerous examples of major restricted public housing in the city.
And I know from a development standpoint, it may not be as financially incentivized for those folks to build that type of housing, they didn't hit the same rental stream as they would in the same downtown, but as I read through this production plan, these may be where we explore some of the tools available to us as a city to work with the developer. I'm just, I guess what I'm trying to do is articulate, based on folks I represent, there is a noticeable need for that type of senior housing. Second point, and I'm going to stop talking, you actually helped me to kind of put this together, was, you know, when you think about the affordable housing, if you're building a 100-unit complex, for example, 20% of that is for affordable housing, so that's, what, 20 units? Of that 20 units, up to 70% can be for basically a residency restriction, so 14, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's important, right, so as we set forth on this housing, the way I see it, you're going to make this available, you know, to that market-grade affordable housing type of demographic. I think it's important to know that those units can cater up to a certain percentage of the folks that are already Quincy residents. It's very important to me, but I'll come back, I want to just open it up for folks on the committee, also for us. Council Fin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank everybody in the planning department for the process over the last month and a half, I think we've talked about, in terms of, you know, putting this out, and for the very fact that we're having a conversation, significant, I also want to commend Metropolitan Area Planning Council for the work that they did, and again, particularly looking to the data, so to speak, and looking at the reality of demographic trends and housing trends that are impacting the city of Quincy, so that we're not making housing plans in a vacuum, but rather understanding the forces that are at work in the relationship. But I guess the one thing right out of the box, and first of all, is although this is called the Housing Production Plan, in reality, it really lists a lot of outputs. So, I guess the first point to make is this plan is not a static document that's going to be cut by the shelf, correct? This is calling for certain things that we would want to develop as we move forward in terms of what the strategy around creating, not just, this is a critical point, this is not just about the affordable housing, correct? This is about housing generally within the city of Quincy, and what we want for our community to reflect the various diverse people that make it up. I mean, I think the most significant thing is 60%, is it older, or about the rent burden? The numbers, it's about 40%?
40%, excuse me, I don't want to inflate it anymore, but that's significant, particularly for an aging demographic of folks that are fixed incomes and the like, again, struggling with needing their monthly rents, so. But again, it is part of the larger community. One question I want to make, certainly 4,000 units that, the 2,000, I think it is, right, that are in the pipeline, those that are not including what we're doing downtown, would say, are these things that have been permitted and are actually in progress in some way?
These are the all projects in the city that are either in permitting or recently constructed.
Right. So, have we factored in what we're projecting in terms of downtown development specifically as it impacts the affordable housing requirements under 40B at this point? Because we're projecting out a certain number of units, of which my understanding is based on the zoning, that will, those will not include any affordable units, so are we, can we factor that into the equation at all in terms of the added stress that that will put in terms of needing 40B applications?
Well, the 4,000 number of the projection there is to meet the incoming demand of units. What the 10% really looks at is of the expected growth, where our gap is, so another way of saying that we're expected to need 4,000 units inclusive of those 2,400, so.
Which includes what you were planning for downtown?
Correct.
But the bottom line in terms of 40B is that those numbers are adding pressure in order to maintain that, given the fact that there's been no connection to affordable housing for that zone whatsoever at this point?
Well, yes, the state looks at the total year-round housing stock within the city. What our projections show is that we'll have, we will meet the 10% requirement with the current permits that we have on our pipeline. So, if we continue when these projects get built.
For the 4,000, so that we'd be able to keep you at equal with the.
Right, exactly, those 225 units.
But that is something that we would have to monitor how it goes.
Correct.
In terms of like that. The other question is, just出于 curiosity, because you do reference at once in the plan, but when it comes to the subsidized housing inventory, McKinney Vento units don't count, does that do that?
The some of them do not.
Some of them do not, which do, some do?
The ones that are project-based, so where the voucher or the subsidy stays with the unit, and there's a restriction, those are eligible and count.
They do?
They do.
Okay, that's good, that's great.
However, mobile closures or leasing programs where.
These are dollars, correct?
Right, those do not count. And that's, again, that's under the state regulation identifies what you can count, and it's really within the definition where there needs to be use restriction.
So, that would apply even in those situations where, they used to call it anyways, the SHP dollars, McKinney dollars, where they're actually utilized to lease up entire perhaps properties that could even resemble almost project-based, they're not being counted? If that's my understanding correct, that's unfortunate, because again, I think what's amazing about the city of Quincy over the last 20-some, longer than that, I guess closer to 25 years, is that while many cities were poor in money and services, Quincy utilized McKinney Vento for housing as well, and that was a very positive one. The other issue, and I'm so glad the plan does touch on it, because again, it's an issue statewide, and of course, this body in the past, it's actually passed support state legislation to be able to fix the expiring use issue to some extent, or to come up with ways of dealing with that specific problem. But if I understand correctly, what you're suggesting, so if the next crisis in terms of expiring use for the city of Quincy is not up to 2,000 annually?
That's one of the next, yes, where 4 units are, can expire under the existing terms.
The plan doesn't have a schedule for, like, a better graph or whatever relating to what those expiring use properties are, does it contain anything like that? It actually addresses the places that.
Plan does not, but I do, I mean, I have the three properties. One of them is actually owned by the Housing Authority, with 18 units, I believe, so it's incredible, I won't speak for them, but it's the Quincy Housing Authority that owns these affordable units.
But if you were to talk about, is it okay for me to name a specific address, like Hancock Court?
Yep.
What does that current status?
So, there are two others, Granite Place.
Right.
And Hancock Court. Granite Place was a 121A project. And the city would have to work with the property owner and have discussions with them about what their intentions are, and.
But when, I'm more interested, Robert, when is the date of that expiration of?
Oh, sorry, 2019.
That's when the 2019, correct. So, is that being continued, because didn't they have their own expiration date of 2017 at one point? For Hancock Court?
It might not with their vouchers, but the actual use agreements would be 2019.
2019, okay, so those conversations are going to be ongoing, I trust, in terms of what their future. What would be helpful, from my perspective, and the only reason I'm saying this, because someone had passed some numbers related to expiring use that might be outdated, so to the extent that you can update us in relation to those properties, that would be helpful.
Okay.
And again, I also, I mean, today, I know most of these folks have been actually focused on continuing to do what they do for the most part. I guess the other thing is the Wallace and properties, the power of the mountain road, all those properties are, what's, do you have, do you know what their dates are for expiring use?
I believe they were scheduled with the actual vouchers were sometimes 2016 and 2017. I believe they're actively in discussions with the political consultants.
So, it's their intention, their intention, if you're in relation to that. I think one of the points that you made, that's a good one to make, in terms of the rent burden, is that even in these four situations, based on the income, you have people who are rent burdened, as a result of, again, rents, even the rates that they're set, that creates some difficulty for particularly. One last question, I have, again, I know over enough time as well, but specifically, I forgot my one last question, so that's probably a good secret that I need to wrap this up. So, and again, I don't know if anyone else has questions, but I would like to make a motion that we accept the plan, the result of the housing committee approval.
Sure.
Motion for a motion, Council for Vice Chair.
Thank you, I'll pause second motion, I have to cross the, then we go to the Affordable Housing Trust, and you're wrong, I mean, just thank you, you've done a lot of terrific work here, and more than the pressure, and have the MIPC, but also, out of your presentation on the Affordable Housing Trust, I think part of what's identified here is a discussion we have often in our meetings, is the payment rule of fee structure versus the creation of units, creation of units on-site, and we've had some creative ideas, for example, Tim Arum Road, we talked about, basically, creating units on-site, we acquired a multifamily house, made that a mission to, so we're able to create units, but not necessarily payment. And for us, it's always a challenge in being able to utilize the funds to create units, it's just cross-prohibited for us. So, that's the name that we've been talking about, the city having here, your goals to be looking at, and I know, I look forward to that discussion. You also had referenced about 10 million funds coming online to the Affordable Housing Trust, and I just, page 63, so we have 10.25 million coming into the trust. So, are those permanent projects, or are those projections, knowing what we have in the pipeline? I guess when, for this document's purposes, I was just trying to drill down to that number, because I know we've looked at, you know, we've worked through the permitting of some of these in the pipeline, and then unit structure versus the what's in the bank, so if you just speak to that.
Yeah, that's some of the projections.
It's a projection, though?
It's a projection.
Okay. I want to say we had about 30 million current funds, and our permanent funds are probably, what was it?
I believe as of the last meeting, approximately 2.5 million.
The retail is in the pipeline?
Well, that was in the fund currently. And the projection, it's actually since increased from 10 to probably 14.
Okay.
In terms of projected projects that have been permitted, that are on a schedule to pay into the trust.
Just looking at that kind of, I'll dodge off, I see we're up against the clock. Other thing that I think Council Fin talked about, units sunset, and in our opportunity, we have the Home by the Housing Authority, would they not be under legal to retain them into the housing stock? I guess I was confused, we want to just speak on that.
Sure, so.
Because I was expecting that to be, I think it was in Council, Paul's, just name what it's part of the land, so when I saw that 361 unit number, the sunset date, in my mind, those are the units we were talking about, and Council Fin made a good point, so.
Yeah, I think it's important to, so for organizations such as the Housing Authority or other, and other mission-driven organizations, those organizations are either obligated to or often do themselves proactively seek to increase affordability.
On the other, to the point of Housing Authority, you referenced page 72, the city has an opportunity to develop on Housing Authority, would we have that jurisdiction, or what would, what would an agreement like that? I mean, obviously, that's a long conversation to say, but I thought it was an interesting opportunity, because I just went a little back to the chart, page 33, is the projected housing units needed, and what's needed where. And jumping off the charts to me is single-family, saying that 1270 is what should be additional 1270s before 2020, the timeline is 2017 to 2020, we're approaching 2020. Obviously, I can see uptick of downtown, a lot of multifamily, the periphery of downtown, a lot of residents' beach, and a lot of references to what we're seeing happening in the residents' beach, you've got a multifamily house that's being torn down, it's being built out to optimize the zoning, and so I was just curious about if we had, what you had thought were our opportunities for single-family, because we look at some housing protection in Good Valley, and thought of like, the city is very strong, single-family home market, yet I don't see the landscape to build out 1270 homes, so that was something that jumped off to me.
Well, we have resources. Single families can be used for both rental and homeownership, obviously, single families are geared towards homeownership, and, you know, that's something that we will explore is looking at single-family residences and how we make those deal with it in future.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're saying, I took this as not truly affordable, this is the units' housing unit structure, what, I was just started with the MIPC was saying, the housing growth was needed in Quincy specific. was saying, the housing growth was needed in Quincy specific.
Oh, I see.
We're saying, like, 2020, it talks about a stronger region, in 2020, stronger region, it's saying multifamily ownership by 80, multifamily rentals 1,800, single family ownership 1270, and then tallying our total units of 40, 49, as far as housing growth in the area.
I see, so new production.
New back.
I'm not trying to, it's out of page 32, 33.
The city does have open space, we must be taking a look at open space parcels development, and must be taking a look at either undeveloped parcels, rezoning, I guess that's what I was looking for, the strategy.
I think what that's getting to more of is essentially as, also it's the value of single families that creates supply and for single...
More turnover than creation.
Yes, more turnover than actual creation of units.
Okay. I think one thing that we talked about is a lot of our districts is aging in place and part of our zoning, that I've heard from families is about in-law apartments, right? So you don't want to be taking a single family, burning it to back in the day, the residence days, and the family potentially tear down, and people are looking to optimize and create a new family, the appetite was not for that, but there's that appetite maybe for the in-law apartment, what if it's for people to age in place and comment, I think these recent sources have done a lot with common interest in working around that, but I think that is something that I've seen is in need for housing, for keeping people, and I think Council Paul talked about, it's people saying, that was something that I'm seeing right from the inside. Another thing on the affordable housing, is creation of family units, so Quincy Housing Affairs, property in downtown, it's a substantial market, they are, they are family, they're family units, and how would people project me in saying, I'm looking for housing solution, need affordable solution, that the weightless Quincy housing is global, and how it's no longer, because of their funding, maybe who's explaining, it's not priority for Quincy residents, if you're Quincy residents, you're going to have list, it's open to anybody, so even if it's Quincy Housing Authority for housing in Quincy, there's definitely a strong demand for family housing, affordable units for public housing, as well as for non-public housing, but that's something that I'm here very regularly, particularly on the lead for public housing and to be a little on some family housing. And I think, great, more so on the payment and whoever's issue, I think we have so much to do with affordable housing trust on that, and I wanted to just give a shout out, I'm surprised that I've not seen them in the audience, but in particular, in the action, and Neighbor Works of the Two Chodos, the work within our community, and they have more so on Neighbor Works, for their creation of affordable units, they are saving the project of the sunsetting units, they really truly should be commended for their work in helping us maintain our status. I wish they had more, I'm looking forward to have their work to help you with stuff.
Twelve seconds, Council.
Twelve seconds.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor to move through on the Housing Production Plan. Any further discussion from members of the committee? See now, all those in favor?
I don't like it.
Opposed? Okay, I have a little revisit this subsequently at the end of the city council meeting, clear the housing committee adjourned at 7:38. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Quincy City Council, October 17th, 2016. If the clerk would please call the board.
Council Finn.
Present.
Council Paul.
Present.
Council Finn.
Present.
Council Harris.
Present.
Council Ford. Council Green. Council Hamid. Council Gill.
I would like to note that the president is on her way, but she did ask if we could start, I can start the meeting this evening. So I, again, I'd like to invite you to stand and join in a moment of silence, in a prayer for inspiring inspiration, particularly to remember all those serving our country, particularly with everything that's happening this evening in Iraq, those people who are serving overseas, those serving at home, and we keep them in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. I invite you to join me in a pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and considering republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, if you could read, display over the open meeting log.
Pursuant to the open meeting log, any person may make an audio or video recording of the public meeting, or may transmit the meeting to a media, attempts not to be advised or subject to court, or transmission not being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, and are deemed to be null and infomissible.
Thank you. On the first item on our agenda, Madam clerk.
First item on the agenda is a word recognition of a festival of Diwali.
Thank you. Madam Chair, thank you. My colleagues on the city council, thank you all as well. Again, it's an interesting symbol, the symbols of light and darkness are some of the most ancient religious symbols that go across all religious faiths, and they tend to symbolize the ultimate human hope and belief in good over evil. And I think those sentiments, given everything that's going on in the world, are very strong and powerful sentiments to have. And I take great pleasure, and many of you are probably Quincy guys or gals who were born and reared in Quincy, I wasn't, I grew up in a very different type of place.